Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. City of Palm Coast, City Council Meeting, Tuesday, February 21st, 2017. It is 9:00 a.m. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland?
Here.
Vice Mayor Nobiel?
Here.
Councilmember Cuff?
Here.
Councilmember Clufus?
Here.
Councilmember Shipley?
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to move to approve?
Seconded. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We obviously have an agenda item for first reading, Mr. Landon. Did you want to, or Mr. Reichman?
I can take it. The first two items were land use items for the same property. They are quasi-traditional and require certain legal notices. Staff provided the newspaper with the notices for both of them, but only one of them was published on time, which means you cannot hold a hearing on this today and cannot take any comments because it has to be under a properly noticed meeting. So we have rescheduled both of these items for your next business meeting, which is March 7th, 6:30 p.m. in this room. And as you can tell from very interested neighbors, they've gotten the word and so we're successful in letting people know that it has been rescheduled. So there's no action for you to take. It's just move on to the next item.
We'll move on to agenda item number two, resolution authorization for the purchase of materials and associated expenses in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for the construction improvements of the Pine Lakes Path pedestrian bridge.
This is going to be a real quick meeting. As you know, we've struggled with this bridge. It actually is for the Pine Lakes Trail and it crosses a ditch, but it's one of those we call a wet ditch. It has about seven feet of water in it. So it's been a challenge and our engineers decided the best solution is to extend the pipes. But when you have seven feet of water and large pipes that you can walk through, we have to hire somebody to install the pipes in the head wall. We have been attempting to do that, but as we've been experiencing, contractors are very busy right now. We have four people we're getting bids or quotes from and only received full quotes from two of them. A couple of them are local, a couple of them are contractors we've used that are in the region. So what we are recommending or asking you to do is not take action on this at this time until we are able to get all the prices in and so we can get the best price and make sure that we have, not just the best price, but have confirmed that we're comparing apples and apples and do that evaluation, that they're all giving us quotes on the same project. So we are asking that no action be taken on this item and we'll once again put it on your next agenda. Just so you know, we've estimated this to be about a $100,000 project. The little bit is a little above that. Once again, it's kind of what, engineers aren't up to date with all the rising costs. And that's for the contractor and then we'll have about $30,000 of our own time and materials in it because we're going to do some of the work ourselves, the things our crews can do. In the meantime, because this is something that we really need to get done, our crews will go out and start the demolition and preparing the site so that once the contract is signed with the contractor that puts in the pipes and everything, we will be ready to go. So at this point, there's no action on this item either.
Because this is an agenda item, do we need to take a motion not to take any action?
No, because it's just a resolution. No action means we can't award the contract.
Okay.
And there's nothing necessary on part of City Council. Unless you, which I don't think is really an option, no need for us to go out and start work if you're not willing to repair this path, but not repairing this path is not an option because then it becomes a dead end in the middle of the street kind of thing.
Okay, we'll now move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make comments on agenda item number three, four, and five? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public comments under the consent agenda and ask for a motion to approve items three, four, and five.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Motion seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to agenda item number D, which is public participation. The public has up to three minutes to speak on issues not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I just want to say that the medium on Beltier South is coming along great. It's looking better and better and better and my compliments to the people that's working out there diligently. You know, we always get the bad stuff, but you never hear the good stuff and that's one of the positive things, how it looks. Thank you.
Any other member from the public wish to make comment? We'll close public comments and we'll take it to discussion by City Council of Matters Not on the Agenda. Councilmember Cuff?
The only item that I did want to comment on is the email that Mr. Landon circulated to us all this morning. For council members who haven't seen HB 17, House Bill 17, I don't know what the legislature was smoking this year, but as I read it and I appreciate Mr. Reichman's comments, it essentially attempts to repeal home rule, which has been the law of the state since I was a baby assistant city attorney down in Broward County back in the 70s. I'm not sure.
1968.
Yeah, so it's even longer than that then. I was a freshman in college when that happened, but.
Holy smokes.
Yeah, for those, for those, for those of you that haven't seen it, I would commend Mr. Landon's email to your attention and the League of Cities' position paper on it.
Great.
That's the only comment I have.
Vice Mayor Nobiel?
Well, since this was a short meeting, I have a big issue. No, I'm only kidding. I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shipley?
Just happy birthday, Mr. Nobiel. Other than that, I have nothing.
Forty-six today.
I'll bet.
My only comments, I have two actually. One is I concur as far as this piece of legislation. I'm not surprised. I think the legislature every single year tries to minimize our ability to govern locally. So it's unfortunate, but I'm certain that the League of Cities, as well as our lobbyists, will do hopefully an effective job making sure this does not go through.
Madam Mayor, can I interrupt and just so the record is clear and then so the public can understand what the, we face efforts at preemption on Tallahassee every year, but this is the first one that I've seen in, I think, ever that has this scope. And it's, and I would respectfully suggest that it is a direct attack on home rule. And if I could read to you all and so the public, because I think this would be of concern to the members and the citizens of the City of Palm Coast. This, and it's early in the legislation, but this is what's being proposed and that is that any regulation of business, profession, or occupation is expressly prohibited. This is express preemption, but it says any regulation after January 1, 2017 would be preempted. That means you can't impose any regulations basically on any businesses in the City of Palm Coast. But then it goes further and it says that any regulation adopted prior to January 1, 2017 will expire on January 1, 2020. So there will be, what they're saying is that any local government, any city will not be able to have any regulations whatsoever to protect its own citizens at all.
As of 2020.
As of 2020, nothing. It's just, it's mind boggling.
Now, a local example of that recently would be our bottle clubs, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Internet cafes.
Internet cafes.
Adult entertainment establishments.
Pillbills.
I mean, you start, you start thinking about these specific, absolutely, council member.
I think what we can also do as a council, I'm going to ask for two pieces. One is writing a letter of opposition to our legislative delegation demonstrating the fact that not only we're offended by this type of legislation, but it really does go against what we believe to be true and that's defining our own destiny within our communities. So I think that would send a message at least to our legislative delegation that we are strongly opposed to this type of legislation and we're asking for their support in stopping it. Is everyone okay with sending a letter?
Is there an indication of garnering support at the legislative level?
I can't answer that. As I indicated, it is in subcommittee.
It's way too early to tell which bill is going to.
And the only reason that the alarm bells went off, and this was in the phone call that I had with Councilmember Cuff, is we just never, this is just so, so extreme.
Well, you know, what you have to watch with something like this is what's the right hand doing. So they're yelling at us with this here and this could be a ploy to get something smaller. So they're coming at it large and then they'll come back and say, okay, well, maybe we'll just agree to regulate this little bit and we got to fight it completely and say, no, this needs to just go away. All face, you know, face down, we're not going to negotiate, we're not going to waiver. So I think that letter and a letter on both ends saying that, you know, we don't even want this negotiated, we just want it removed.
Do that. The second item that I wanted to bring up yesterday, I toured our hospital and sat down with the CEO, Dr. Jimenez, and our local legislature representative Renner has filed one of many bills. He's filing this legislative session that will impact us directly. This one is of concern to our hospital and Representative Renner will be on the radio Friday as well as Dr. Jimenez to speak on this issue. I met with Representative Renner yesterday and he indicated that he knows this is going to have a very negative impact on our hospital locally, but he feels that it's going to reduce healthcare costs. And what he fails to recognize is locally here, we have 60% of our residents are Medicare. Very few are what they call commercialized insurance and then we have self-pay and then Medicaid. So what he's talking about in legislation, it's allowing doctors to open up clinics for recovery cares without having to go to the hospital and have a procedure and heal in the hospital. What the hospital is indicating is it's putting an unfair advantage, A, on the hospital because these recovery centers are not put up to the same standards as our hospitals, but also it's about our service to our residents as well. It provides very substandard care. It's, they're closed at night, they only have a nurse on hand and Representative Renner is pushing this legislation on behalf of the Physicians Association in the State of Florida. So it will have a direct negative impact. This is one of our largest employers in our city. They have made substantial investments in our community and continue to do so with expansions of services for our residents and I really feel that we just need to support the hospital. I will forward you what their opposition of the piece is, but I think it's important for us to also come together and write a letter as well for Mr. Representative Renner saying, you know, please don't do anything that negatively impacts our local hospital. We rely on them for services. They're, it's something that they provide for us. So I think it's important, this one. I know we've talked about other issues of Enterprise Florida and Visit Florida and how that's going to have a negative impact, but this one in particular will hurt a significant employment base in our community. So if anyone would not like to write a letter, yes?
I mean, I think the letter is appropriate. What's the bill number?
It is, I have it here. Sorry, it takes me a little longer with these.
Well, I mean, if, you know, if the city attorney or city manager.
I have it.
Locate the legislation and just send the citation to each of us, that'd be fine.
I just have one thing. I need to look it up. I need to look into this a little bit more, but I'm not for, I guess I'm one of the very few. I'm not for protecting a business. I understand their foothold in Flagler County and their importance, but there are people who can't afford certain care and.
But this wouldn't, this wouldn't do it, just to let you know, Steve, like self-pay.
Well, I know, I need to read it.
Sure.
That's what I'm saying. I need to look into it a little bit deeper and see that, but the, we can't, what I'm saying is, I'm not saying right or wrong, because I don't know right now, but I wouldn't look at it just from the perspective that it would hurt the local hospital. You see what I'm saying? If it unjustly does and then doesn't provide the services that the hospital is providing, then yes. But if it is, then I don't want to protect the hospital just, you know what I'm saying? If we could save money for people, not for us, you know, but for people, then I'm not opposed to it. But again, I can't make it to say, I don't, I don't know much about it.
I'll send it to you, just, but just so we can have this conversation publicly now is the fact of these recovery centers aren't obligated by state statute to allow self-pay to come into their facility. Hospitals are.
Right.
And so that's the difference. So those that are less fortunate, that are not insured, they don't accept Medicaid as well, that puts a severe disadvantage to our residents that can't afford to go in and have a procedure. And that's, that's the differential.
So it's just going to move the indigent population to the hospital?
Completely.
And those who can pay and have commercial insurance would move out to this for a lower service?
Completely.
Okay.
Yes, and what we're saying is, quite frankly, it is about that cost and at the end of the day, if it's putting our residents that don't have that, because also why they don't accept Medicaid in these kind of facilities is because the low rate, the rate of return isn't there for them. So they're able to open up these facilities without the same parameters that the hospitals are put under, which is you have to take a patient when they're coming in. You can't turn away services.
Yeah, and under that, what will ultimately happen is we'll start subsidizing the hospitals so it's going to cost us anyway.
That's exactly it. So I'll definitely send you the legislation, but it is.
Okay, yeah.
I've looked at it, it will have an impact and, you know, again, for Representative Renner, I'm sort of shocked when he, he's the one who sponsors bills, but he has yet to go in and speak to the hospital about it. So, but recognizes that it will have a negative impact. So, and it really is about costs and stuff, so. Okay, well, thank you for that. I appreciate the discussion, so. I have nothing else actually on my discussion, so city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Just, you said a word that prompted me to remember something. Remember, we were talking about the other legislation earlier about preemption. One of the cosponsors was Mr. Renner. So I think a letter probably might be helpful. Just, I didn't, I didn't know if any, it just occurred to me, that one of our legislators is the, is the cosponsor of that bill, unless there's, unless there's another, another Renner in Tallahassee. We are, we are well aware.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. Nothing further, just stirred that pot a little bit more, sorry.
Is that all, Mr. Reichman?
That's all I had.
Okay. Mr. Landon?
I'm going to stay on the same theme because it is amazing some of the bills coming through. You know, some of them get a lot of publicity, like the bill to end Visit Florida, that's the correct one, and some other legislation to cut back on helping support tourism and incentives for bringing businesses into Florida. But at local level, those are also, those bills are also a real concern to us. For example, the, one of the bills is proposing to cut funding for the Small Business Development Center, which is our partner with our BAC. And for us, you know, small business is really our, our base, our bread and butter and has been a very successful partnership. And I think sometimes people in Tallahassee don't realize the impact that has back home. Another bill is proposed and once again by our representative, possibly, I don't know if it's been filed, but there's been some talk, and there is every year, of eliminating the business tax receipt. That does a couple of things. It hurts us financially, which in order to maintain our level of service or the same revenue stream, what you would do is shift those dollars from businesses to our residents. And that, to me, this doesn't make any sense whatsoever. But even more importantly than the dollars is that there was like one person that investigates all the scams that businesses may try to take advantage of people, particularly elderly people, or the people like that are taken advantage by illegal contractors. And it's those business tax receipt records that actually help us and it's those laws that allow us to stop them from doing business if they don't follow the local laws and they, so it is important to us from, from that regulatory standpoint of protecting our citizens and, you know, we've seen many examples. There's been many examples where, you know, you had contractors say, oh, pay me in full before I get started and then disappear. We can give you a lot of those examples and it's those type of regulations at the local level that are so important to help protect our own citizens that I don't think people in Tallahassee all understand the impact, so.
And let me state that in my discussions with Representative Renner yesterday, I did make him aware of that impact of our Business Assistance Center as well as the discussion of the tax receipt. So I know he's going to be discussing that with Bo and he indicated that if there was something within those portions of the bill, that he'd be willing to look at it, address it, and take it out.
Okay.
So I do think that's important to note, that that discussion did occur and hopefully Bo was in touch with them and gave them the data.
Yes, we've already made strides in those directions. In general, because this is the first legislative session for this council, you know, we do have a lobbyist that represents us in Tallahassee, Doug Bell, been doing it before I got here, so last probably 15, 16 years. He is very much, has good ties with the Florida League of Cities and so there's good connection there. The, in general, from past direction of council, anytime a bill it preempts our rights or preempts local government, obviously the Florida League of Cities tries to fight that bill and we always give Doug the green light to help them from our standpoint. And the other one is anytime we have just a bill that tries to reduce our revenue stream, that's another one that happens all the time to us and it's just pretty much a standing directive to Doug Bell that if Tallahassee is just going to cut local revenue, that we're going to be opposed to that without replacing it or without having a big picture because they just put us in the position of trying to figure out how we're going to replace it without them really having to put any thought into how it impacts us locally. Other than that, it's primarily items that you bring up during the year, like you're doing tonight or today. Your legislative priorities, still trying to move forward with funding requests, difficult in this environment. It's going to be an interesting environment with the budget and everything and the feud's already going on between some of the, well, at least the House side and the governor and everything, so it's going to be interesting to watch.
I think what's disappointing in this whole thing is the House has decided that if we're asking for an appropriation, that the member of that, our legislator, has to file a bill asking to do so. It's a new rule, it's a new policy, but he has 16 bills that he's filing and not one of them are requests for funding. So it's, it's.
Right.
It's odd.
And our request for funding is tied into mandates that they've, the state have issued for us, such as, you know, we have to drill more wells. So if we have to drill more wells to meet your regulations, then that must be of state interest and therefore the state should help us with that cost instead of just strictly be the burden of locally. So those are examples of things we're trying to do from a revenue share standpoint, so. Just wanted to give you that kind of, that update. Other than that, I don't have anything else. It's been a quiet week other than some action at the legislative level. They're getting geared up, so, Mayor, that's all I've got.
Question.
Yes.
Brush fires.
Yes.
We good? We're good. Okay.
Well, at this moment.
At this moment, yeah, yeah, well, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yes, it is, you know, it's that time of year, you know, you're still in the dry season and it goes on until May and then maybe sometimes beyond that. So we're supposed to get days of rain, but everybody needs to be very cautious right now with fires because we're already starting to see them around us. So, good point, always, and then anytime you see smoke or fire, 911. Don't think, well, somebody else called it in or, well, that must be a planned fire. Even in your neighborhood, it's amazing how the neighbors will get something started and they should not be burning and all it takes is for a spark to hit one of the tree canopies and it takes off and, so if you see a fire, call 911.
I will gladly pass a motion or forward a motion to adjourn.
And happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the day. Thank you. That was.